Good evening and welcome to the September 6th Palmer Town Council meeting. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic and to its citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, visitors' comments? Is there anyone who would like to address the council this evening?
I have a question. I'd like to explain the way taxes are calculated. Now, you start Proposition 2 and 1/2, correct?
Yes.
Now, it seemed like the taxes went up substantially the past quarter. And it seemed like they went up a lot more than 2 and 1/2 percent. Sometimes like 7, 8 percent, maybe even 10 percent. Now, why does it go above 2 and 1/2 percent?
So, the bill that you just got is 50 percent of your bill from last year. So, if you look at your two bills from last year, your bill should be half of what you paid in fiscal '25.
Yeah.
And then, the adjustment to the bill doesn't happen until the third quarter bill. So, at this point, the tax rate has not been sent or set, and values have not changed. So, the assessed value has not changed on anyone's property. So, I don't know what the increase is at this point because it hasn't been determined yet. But, the way it goes up is you have what's called the levy limit. You add 2 and 1/2 percent to that levy limit, and then any new growth that the assessors capture. So, that could be someone building a new house, a new business, putting a deck, or some improvement on their home. Those all affect what's called new growth, and then that's the adjusted levy limit that we can raise through taxation. So, I don't know. Your bill right now that you have should only be half, exactly half of what you paid last year, with no increase yet. That hasn't happened yet.
Okay, so, I was wondering, there's a lot of valuations have gone up.
Yeah, so, that's part of what happens when the tax rate fluctuates, and the tax rate goes up and down based on the value. So, the town has to still collect the same dollar amount of money, but the proportional share of every taxpayer is based on the assessed value. So, when we have the assessors come in for the tax classification hearing, those would be good questions to ask during the public hearing. But, so, yes, in theory, can your tax bill go up more than 2 and 1/2 percent? Yes, it can. If the value of your home goes up, then it will go up. And we're still having the situation that we've had since COVID, where properties are selling for a lot more than what the assessed value is that the assessors have, and they have to make those adjustments to be in line with the standards that the Department of Revenue has for assessing property.
Okay, so, when you submit a budget, it's up to the assessors to set the tax rate? That you can collect in taxes to meet that budget that you requested?
The tax rate meets the budget. So, the assessors are, all the assessors are doing is plugging in all the numbers. They're plugging in the budget, they're plugging in state aid revenue, they're plugging in local revenue, and then the difference is what has to be raised through taxation. So, it's not the assessors, yes, they're not really setting the tax rate. The tax rate's setting itself based on a whole bunch of numbers. But, yes, so, when we have the classification hearing, we're not setting the tax rate either. We're deciding whether we're having a single tax rate or a...
Split.
A split tax rate, so, commercial and industrial and personal property paying a higher rate. And then, there's a few other votes that we take. But, the tax rate is the tax rate based on the budget that's passed, and then what the revenue sources are.
Okay, so, when you collect money and you have free cash?
Yep.
What is that free cash money? Like, if you, the line item, and you had a line item say $100,000, but only about $60,000 was spent?
Well, that would be a big swing, but...
Wow, I'm just saying.
Okay.
So, you have $40,000 left, right?
Oh, 600? Oh, well, right, so, free cash can be generated from, if you have a budget, and the whole budget isn't spent, whatever's not spent will close out to free cash.
Certified.
It can be revenue. So, for instance, like, a big revenue source right now that usually comes in higher than what is estimated is investment income. So, you know, interest rates are up, are very high right now. Well, I mean, they're starting to come down a little bit. But, if we can earn interest in the 4 percent range or high 3s, we're not going to budget at that number because as soon as interest rates come down... If we were budgeting way up here, when rates come down, we're going to have a deficit. We're going to have a problem. So, that's an area where usually our estimated revenue source will be less than what we actually collect. Sometimes excise tax is another one because excise tax is a local source that goes up and down depending on, like, a few years ago when you couldn't get a car, you couldn't, there was no cars on the lot, you couldn't get cars, right? So, that kind of dumped, dropped a little because there was no availability, and so, people were buying used cars because you could find used cars, but you couldn't find new cars. Or, pretty much anything that's, the source of it is driven by the economy, that's usually when you see, like, the revenue actually collected could be higher than what you estimate. So, and then, if you have budgets, it starts to get more, that's like the simple part, and then it gets more complicated. If you have budgets that you encumbered the money for some purpose, or, let's say, we had a project that was funded with free cash, and then, the project gets done and there's extra money. That money closes back into free cash. So, it's, the money moves in and out depending on what we do. So, there's many different sources of it.
I've been looking at this year, and I didn't see anything in free cash. I was curious.
So, free cash only, free cash gets certified once a year. So, like, right now, as of today, there is no free cash because until the town accountant submits her balance sheet to the Department of Revenue, there is no free cash. It went away on July 1st, so...
Okay, so, on the next, the next tax bill?
Yep.
It should be considerably less than the previous two? Because usually, when you get two on a bill, you know, they're just about the same except for a penny. That's the one and two, and when three and four comes...
Three and four is your actual bill. So, in order, that's where people get a little confused is when they get their bill for the third and fourth quarter, they think it skyrocketed. But, you have to look at, what did you pay on the first and second quarter, and then the third and fourth, and then compare that to the year before for those same quarters, and that's really what your bill went up. So, I don't know what the tax rate is yet because we're not at that point yet. We don't usually do that until end of November, or November meeting. So, we've got a couple months to go.
I thought the assessors were here just a few months ago. We walked in and set the rate and walked out.
It was in the last November.
Time flies when we're having fun, right?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, sure.
Real quick, because to touch on what he was, I heard you right saying that it actually can go up higher than 2 and 1/2 percent. I guess my question is, what is the purpose of Proposition 2 and 1/2 then?
The budget can't go up higher than that, but your bill could if all of a sudden the value of your home went up, or if your value went down.
What's the tax budget?
It's the same piece of, it's a piece of pie.
It was made for the budget, saying you can't increase your...
Your bottom line can't go above...
The bottom line can't go above 2 and 1/2 percent, is what...
That revenue source.
Plus new growth.
It's not that your tax bill can't, it's the town budget can't, okay?
Okay.
In order for that to go up, you have to have a vote, okay?
You have to have either an override or a dead exclusion. Okay, anybody else seeing none? We have the minutes of April 14th. Any comments or questions on those? Do we have a motion to approve?
So, move.
Okay.
Motion in second, call in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. I have meeting minutes of May 12th. Any questions or comments on those? Do you have a motion?
Make a motion.
Do you have a second?
Yeah.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have meeting minutes from August 11th. Any questions or concerns on those?
But, I don't know that we have a quorum for that, these minutes? Because you weren't here.
I can abstain, and then it still counts.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion.
Okay, do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm abstaining, I will abstain, okay. Okay, under all business, we have a public hearing for Planning Board, Zoning Ordinance, Flood Plane District, under Mass General Laws. Oh, actually, no, this is the, hold on a second, sorry. Chapter 171 of the zoning ordinance, section 68, revisions. So, it's a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing at 6:46. Any questions from the council? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at 6:47. And, this is also second reading. So, "The purpose is to assure that our local ordinance contains the necessary and proper language for compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program. It has been approximately 21 years since the last revision. The proposed language was informed by the 2020 Mass Model Flood Plane Bylaw and drafted with support from the Department of Conservation and Recreation, DCR. Proposed changes of note are the designation of a local flood plane administrator, FPA. This person can act on behalf of the community when implementing certain tasks under the National Flood Insurance Program, NFIP. The draft language proposes the conservation agent as the FPA. FEMA can use this information in their local contacts database. Expanded description of standards to receive a variance from building code and ordinance flood plane requirements. Clarified and expanded definitions. Permits required for all proposed development in the flood plane overlay district. Any alterations require flood plane permit regulation of all development in a flood plane so that flood risks are not increased either on the site or to adjacent or upstream-downstream properties. This is a requirement to comply with NFIP standards. And special permit for new construction over 300 square feet. Update of the flood insurance rate maps, FIRMS, issued by FEMA." And we will move this forward to a vote at our next meeting. Any other full business? Seeing none. New business? We have the appointment of Travis, is it Cannery?
Cannery.
To the Conservation Commission with a term to expire in June of 2027. Do I have a motion to approve that appointment?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second by Carl, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Next, we have an appointment of Brad Brothers as the Tax Title Custodian pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 60, Section 77B. This is while we have a vacancy, okay, to appoint a permanent treasurer. Do you have a motion to appoint Brad as the Tax Title Custodian?
I'll make a motion.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? Okay, next, we have Special Education Stabilization Fund. Matt Francis, the Superintendent of Schools. Come on up, Matt, if you want to talk about this with us, I'm assuming?
Yeah, I provided a memo that explains what a Special Education Stabilization Fund is for and what it can do. But, over the years, you have heard how funding for special education is, can be somewhat volatile depending on costs for services, out-of-district placement, transportation. So, the Special Education Stabilization Fund is a stopgap for an unforeseen budget cost due to one of those situations. It does not talk about, I mean, there's a variety of ways that you can fund it, through surplus, through Medicaid, through setting aside a budget line every single year. The law that is to establish the fund is both entities. The school committee has to vote to approve the establishment of the fund. Town council does as well. And then, once that's established, we can then discuss on, you know, how do we begin to fund it? But, we have to establish it first before we can then begin to talk about how to fund it.
Do you know how many communities have established a...
It's fairly uncommon not to have one nowadays.
Do you have a list of communities that have it?
I don't, I can get you those.
Okay, that would be helpful, I think. I mean, it's not that I'm opposed to this, but I think that for me, I want to kind of see where the budget process shakes out for next year. We know last year was really difficult. And, so, I'd like to see where we stand, if we're still having huge increases to some of our fixed costs that we have no control over, before we actually establish this. And I think historically, if there's been an issue with special education costs that, you know, I mean, luckily, we haven't had any in the past several years. But, I know I was, I absolutely have been sitting here when, you know, we've had a high-cost student move into the district. And the council has always been, I think, very fair with addressing it as we go. So, again, while I understand the logic behind this, personally, I'd like to see a little bit more information as far as, you know, what other communities are doing, and actually, what their revenue source is for funding it?
Yep.
And then, we can talk about it again during budget season. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, no, I, that was really, my thoughts on this too is just, I would, I know that your approach was like, have us pass it and then talk about funding, but I think that I would prefer to talk about funding and then pass it. Sorry, that's my approach.
I agree. That, to set something up without knowing how you're going to fund it, to me, doesn't make sense. As that was my one question I wrote down, where does funding come from? And as I read on, so theoretically, you could transfer funds from our free cash supposedly is one way, which, in my opinion, I think we've already spent enough on the schools. Transfer year-end school operating budget surplus? I don't ever recall that happening. A surplus of school funds, and the one that Medicaid reimbursement, what's that all about?
We use that as a local revenue source, though, so that would be, that would be a hit to our budget.
So, Medicaid reimburses you for what?
For school services.
For school?
There's certain specific school services that personnel deliver in the schools that is billed back to Medicaid.
Okay.
And we just use that as a budget offset?
Correct.
Right now, so it gets incorporated into all of our...
So, somebody does work for...
Students.
It has to do with student...
Students, student services, yep. PTOT, certain specific services that students on IEPs that are receiving get billed back to Medicaid, and then the town uses it.
So, where is it really supposed to go? The money's being...
There's a variety of ways, in my opinion.
Well, I mean, somebody's providing a service, and they're not, they're getting reimbursed now. Are they being paid, where, you know what I mean?
It's, so, no, so, it is, it's a legitimate...
It's a billable service, not to cut you off.
Right, I get it's a billable service.
And then, when the money comes in, the way it works here is it goes into the general fund. So, we, when we're putting the budget together, and I was just talking about local revenues, we budget for that, for a dollar amount for Medicaid reimbursement. So, if we earmark that towards this stabilization fund, then we would, there would be a decrease in the local revenues that we have for the budget. So, again, that would not be an easy...
I agree.
...amount of money to move. But, I think, I think if we just can, for right now, take no action on this, have you get us the other communities that have this fund and what they use as a source of funding, I think that would be helpful. Because if we're moving money out of free cash to fund it, then we might as well just take a vote to just...
Yeah, and I wouldn't, that doesn't make any sense, in my opinion.
Exactly, yeah, so, and, you know, historically, I mean, Phil is right. You guys don't turn back a huge sum of money at the end of the year where we could take a vote to say, you know, whatever money...
Certain percentage, sure.
Exactly. So, I think that we can definitely look into this a little bit more. You can provide us a little, we do have a policy in here from Bedford that was in our packet. I don't know if that came from you or from Brad.
I've added that in, yeah.
Okay, so, we do have that, but, so, if you, you know, in the next month or so, if you can get us that information, and then we can talk about it again. But, we'll talk about it during budget season, I think. That makes the most sense, once we start getting some revenue numbers and some of the bigger expense numbers, okay?
Barbara, real quick, I guess, it's nothing with the, is the, something kind of is disturbing to me, you know, I get reasonings, but, the one that says that if the state is unable to meet its circuit breaker obligations, which, that, I mean, I guess, okay, yeah, it could happen, but, it should never happen, the way the state throws money freely around that. It should never happen that the state, the state requires you to do a certain thing, and they're supposed to fund it, but, jeez, you're worried if they're going to fund it, you know? That's, that just, to me, is like, come on.
Well, that's an every-year thing, unfortunately.
You know, to me, I guess, if the state was to say, oh, jeez, we're not going to fund it, that's when it's our job to bust their chops about it and say, hey, look, you're requiring us to do a certain thing.
MMA and, MMA, and I'm sure the superintendents, I don't know what you're associating.
MESS.
Thank you. I'm sure you, they do, they do have advocates that, that do stay on top of those things, so... Okay, good?
Yeah.
All right, Matt, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Next, we have Resolution 2026-03, which is to transfer $15,000 from capital stabilization for this Thorndike Street area, DIF Phase 1. Brad, do you want to talk about this?
Yeah, so, this is a follow-up from our last meeting where West Mass Development came in to give a proposal of how the process works. So, essentially, what they're requesting is two different phases. Phase 1 is very important based off of, we're up against a hard deadline to map out the area by December 1st, so we capture it based off of last year's tax rate. So, before January 1 comes, we'd be able to capture the current values, which is really what we want to do before things like Liberty Plaza comes online and their full value comes to the table. So, again, that's why you see I put emphasis on Phase 1. The council could also look at this and say, let's just appropriate money for both phases right now. And if it's determined at the end of Phase 1 we don't want to move forward, we can close it out. If you look at the contract that's provided, that is noted in there that if we decide not to move forward, it's not like we're out the 40 grand. We're only out Phase 1 money, which I believe is the 15,000, yep.
Just so everyone else knows, could you explain what the DIF thing means?
It's District Improvement Financing. And the goal of it is really to look at our Thorndike Street area, where we're going to have our commercial development, and be able to allocate funds specific for infrastructure improvements, such as the sewer siphon that's going along there, as well as possibly looking at the water line. I know we're not responsible for water, but if we're going to attract commercial businesses, we need to be able to provide those two basic services, in my opinion. And we define the district, and that would incorporate maybe a sum of a long sheer street. That's why this proposal is Thorndike Street area, to give us more of a blanket than just Thorndike Street, if it needs to happen. But, the Phase 1 is specifically to look at mapping out the area we want to target for the improvement and narrowing that down.
And then, so, this, the tax part of it, I guess, is to explain that it's...
We're moving funding that would usually go to our operating budget for our bottom line to be spent through other, all departments.
Anticipated taxes for that area is going to be used...
It's new taxes.
Right.
Yeah.
Would be used for that.
Correct.
I was just trying to, so people...
Again, it's like, it's an investment in ourselves, really, is how I view it.
And then, after that project is paid off, then that tax money comes back into our budget.
General fund.
Yep.
Do you have any idea what the, what that Liberty Plaza is going to generate?
I don't, I don't.
There's a whole bunch of folks inside of it today.
I think that we should, if we're going to, if we're going to support this, that we should fund both phases right now instead of doing it piecemeal.
I agree.
Especially being that there's the clause that if we don't follow through, we're not losing nothing.
Right, so, I'll make a motion to authorize a transfer of $40,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund for the Thorndike Street area DIF Phase 1 and 2.
Was that a motion?
Yes.
A second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next, we have...
Barbara, as long as we're talking about that, there's a little bit of talk around if Jersey Mike's is still coming in. Some people say...
Jersey Mike's is still on paper coming. No, they have not pulled.
Their rumors are out there, they're not coming. I like them.
Next, we have Resolution 2026-04, which is to transfer $37,800 from the General Fund Salary Reserve Account to various salary line items in the fiscal 2026 budget for negotiated salary increases. Brad?
So, this $37,800 represents two negotiated contracts we've had. It's for the DPW and administrative assistance, and our van drivers are incorporated in that contract in addition to dispatch. So, this covers the cost of both for this fiscal year.
Make a motion?
Yep, go ahead. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is a discussion on council rules. I know you guys were waiting for me. I just had two areas, so, on page 4, under Agenda, it says, "The council president shall approve the agenda before it is posted. All reports, communications, ordinances, or other matters to be submitted to the council shall at least five days prior to each council meeting be delivered to the town manager or council president." So, we're definitely not doing that five days before.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to play catch-up here. What was the section?
Page 4, the first item.
Yeah, we are certainly not doing that.
Right, is that something we can do?
We should be able to.
Okay, so, we'll leave it if you can do it.
Let's make sure that includes the weekend, too, correct?
Yeah, it's just five days.
Yeah.
Yes.
It doesn't say five business days.
Yes, we can do that.
Okay, so, I think, you know, realistically, what should happen is that all the supporting docs should come to me so that I can...
Yeah, come through.
Yeah, okay. And then, the other thing that I will just say, and whether we want to change this, is under, hold on, this section regarding public comments?
Page 4?
Yeah. Let me just find that. Maybe there's a section in here that basically says that there's no discussion. So, we tend to have discussion, so we just had discussion today. Like, a question was asked, and there was discussion.
It's the second to last bullet.
Well, it's the... Well, it's that, that just says no person other than, other than the members of the town council.
And then the other thing that we don't do is that paragraph right above there. We don't have everything available as a packet. So, I mean, I think we, we don't have to do anything tonight, but I, I mean, Brad, if you want to look at those sections, come back with any recommendations that you might have. Those were just the three different things that I saw as not being exactly how we're doing things and we should make them match. Um, I, I know you guys talked, well, you didn't really talk about it, but nobody, it didn't look like anybody had any comments at the last meeting. Everybody else good? Okay.
You betcha.
All righty, subcommittee reports?
Just one note on that quickly. We met, um, uh, the ordinance review committee met. And, um, we are scheduled to meet every second and fourth Thursday of the month. So that's the game plan right now. We had the initial meeting, um, talking about how we're gonna move forward. And the process right now is that we'd be looking to meet the second and fourth Thursday of each month.
What time are those meetings?
Um, I want to say at five o'clock. It's either five or six. Six? Thank you, Russ.
Okay. Town managers' report?
All right, so we got a couple of things going on here. First, I'd like to thank Olivia Chartrand and the Palmer Library for successfully, successfully hosting the movies in the parks this summer. Um, we had four successful events, so special thanks to them. Palmer, unfortunately, we had a positive West Nile test sample last week. Information on best practices to prevent exposure are available on the town Facebook and website. The town of Palmer received an eighty-eight thousand dollar grant from D E R, which is Division of Ecological Restoration, for a culvert replacement, um, two culvert replacements, one on Bacon Street and one on West Ware Road. And I'd like to thank, uh, the planning department and really Heidi for, uh, for taking the lead on the grant. Uh, big news for the sewer, uh, siphon. A location for a potential pump station has been narrowed down to replace the Thorndike Streets sewer siphon. Ground sampling tests are starting soon. This is important as we await a possibility of being awarded grant funding up to eighty percent of the construction cost. So we do have an application in. That project, remember, was estimated between six to eight million. So if we were to get up to eighty percent covered by that, that would be great. And the DIF would actually help offset that. So, uh, there could be potentially no funding that's, uh, having to be, shouldn't say no funding because DIF is covering funding from the town, but, um, it could be no cost to the rate payer directly, um, which would be good. Some bad news on the sewer side. As you guys know, one thing that got brought up through public comment and we were working on behind the scenes was, uh, looking at water reads, um, and being able to look at the usage to be able to bill back. Unfortunately, Three Rivers, um, has declined participation in sending us the meter reads. So right now, that project is a standstill. I'm gonna work with legal to see if there's another workaround we can do with, uh, Three Rivers. But unfortunately, they, um, have decided that they are not interested in providing that information. And again, it's, we can't, we can't continue on the process unless all four districts are on board with that. Because we need all four to make the meter reads and, and make it into our calculations for our sewer, which again, is to get off the E D U system and actually bill more realistic of what the, the usage is by, by building.
So they give a reason?
Um, I, I, I didn't go to the meeting. I got, um, the information was provided to me, so I don't have a definitive reason. But I, I think, um, someone thought it was like personal sensitive information. But I think meter readings, like a bill, it's, in my mind, it's public information. But more to come on that. It just is right now, that's the stance that we're up against, is that unfortunate Three Rivers?
Well, why wouldn't?
What does it matter?
If you, ah, whatever.
Yeah, I don't know either. But, um, we're, we'll try to work through that because again, the best system for everyone and the fairest system to charge appropriately is having those meter reads so we can then bill back to what the actual usage is. Because it is not fair for a, a single person, let's say, who, um, is elderly, who barely uses any water to get charged that full E D U for their house. But more to come on that.
So I guess they don't care about their elderly in Three Rivers. Good job, guys.
Where's Matt?
That's again, hopefully, hopefully, we can get them to work with us, that's the goal. Mass D O T is looking to schedule an in-person meeting to update the status of the passenger rail stop here in Palmer. The date isn't officially confirmed yet, but on paper, they're looking to make this October seventh. It'll be at night and it'll be at most likely the Palmer High School auditorium. Than the library from we had last time. Um, and also, good news in that regard, Mass D O T was awarded, uh, three point five million from the, uh, federal government to conduct the service development plan for the West East Rail Project. So again, good funding coming forward. Um, obviously, it doesn't cover the construction cost by any means, but they're continuing to put money into the program to hopefully bring a stop here to town. In terms of other notes, I have a couple personnel notes. Deb Milliken has been appointed the interim town treasurer. She has started, Deb retired from Islam Meadow as the assistant treasurer collector last year. She'll be working part-time hours, um, and she's filling in the gap for us until we have a permanent replacement. Omen, Ohemun Shremington, um, has been appointed the new recreation director. His first day was today. I will have him attend the next meeting, um, of the council in October. Ohemun comes from Hartford, where he was the deputy, um, director for recreation. So very extensive background. I'm very excited to have him on board here. I did a quick tour with him today through various of our parks and playgrounds and, um, sort of recreational areas. So I know the rec committee's gonna work very closely with him to kind of get him up to speed and bring some things forward here that, uh, we've been not moving forward, I guess, uh, since the last director left. So there's a lot of needs here in town and I'm hopeful Ohemun can bring our recreation department to the next level. And then, the final personnel note is Ashley Place has accepted the role of Director Administrative Services and will start in October. Ashley previously worked with the town of Ashland, where, where she was the Communications and Cultural Event Coordinator. And I'm very excited to have Ashley on board. As you guys know, we passed a very aggressive goal schedule this year, uh, for the town manager, and I'm really looking forward to a partner and being able to, to work with them and, and bring, and hit all of our goals. So again, she starts in October. I will bring both Ohemun and Ashley, um, into the meeting for the council to connect with in October. All right, and then just a couple upcoming events. On, on nine eleven, we have the Remembrance Dedication, which will be held at ten-ten Thorndike Street at six P M. On September seventeenth, um, we have Veterans Coffee Hour at eight-thirty to eleven-thirty. That's at Am Vets. On September nineteenth, we have Building Bridges Veteran Luncheon from twelve to one at Am Vets. On September twenty-ninth, we have, at the Senior Center, we have our Health Fair from ten A M to two P M. A reminder that the first quarter, excuse me, yeah, the first, um, first half of sewer bills are due on October first. On October fourth, we have a Palmer Garden planting, um, with a rain date as of ten-five. I don't have the exact time on that. We'll be putting out a Facebook post and more information to come on that. But again, as we had last time, it was a great showing and I would hope that we have another strong showing from the community on that event as well. And then lastly, um, the Assessor's Office is accepting F Y twenty-six real estate tax exemption applications for qualifying seniors, surviving spouses, veterans, and legally blind, now through April first of two thousand and twenty-six. And then the annual Chapter sixty-one A and sixty-one B renewal applications and new enrollment applications are due to the Assessor's Office no later than December first, two thousand and twenty-five. Renewals were mailed directly to property owners and blank applications are available online at the Assessor's page. If you have any questions regarding either program, um, please reach out to the Assessor's Office. And that was all I got.
Great. Really good on that. Any questions? Miss Selena's correspondence? Counselors Roundtable, anyone?
September twenty-seventh, Thirteenth World will be opening up their doors again for the year. So go down there and get?
Scared.
Yeah. I don't know if I'll be playing this year or not, but?
You will.
Yeah, they're opening it up. I don't know if they are doing the Halloween contest stuff that they did last year.
I know that they're connecting with, um, Palmer, the pub club for athletic boosters.
Right.
So I think if you go through, or somehow if you connect the pub club with them, you get like a five-dollar, are there five-dollar savings or five dollars goes to pub club?
I think it goes to them.
I know last year they had a, a contest for the, the scariest, um, house done up or whatever. I don't know if they're still doing that this year or?
I think that was, uh, Light Up Palmer.
That was Light Up Palmer.
Yeah.
Did that.
Okay.
Yeah. They might have, they might have partnered in some way with, with them, but that was?
They donated prizes or something, right?
I, I, I don't know.
I, I think they did partner up with them, but anyways, hopefully that goes on again.
Anything else to go?
Something.
Okay.
Kind of excited about the, the Hartford guy coming in for the parks and recs. Years ago, I tried to interject different things that they have in the parks in Connecticut. They're so superior to ours, I believe, because they have, um, gazebo's, everything in the soccer rings. Their equipment is really good. My grandkids are from there, so I go to a few of them.
Good, yeah, no, I'm excited.
Brings the flavor.
Yeah, I know, and it's, it's just interesting, you know, again, we took maybe hour and a half, two hours today of going through all of our, our, our recreational fields and, and parks. And I struggle personally with the feeling of when people say there's no space to do X, Y, and Z in town. If you, if you take the tour, we have more space we know what to do with. And it's just as, it's game planning and mapping out logistics of this can go here, we'll take a year off of this field. It all can be done, and I'm excited to, uh, have him kind of lead the charge on that, so.
Yeah. Awesome.
You'll set us?
I'm set.
Okay. All right, will she be adjourned?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good night.